Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got everybody here. We've got the quorum tonight. And, uh, the regular agenda here, we've got one addition. We'll do the sheriff's update after the public comment. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oversight on our part, so we got you in here. Otherwise, I think we're over. So I think we got everything else. Did you guys miss something? Brent, anything else?
Uh, that's the only thing I have.
Uh, the only thing?
Oh. Your memory thing?
Uh, well, that and I was gonna point out number five. Do we also need to review and approve the minutes from the twenty-fifth?
Yes, we had that on there too.
So that would be five A or something?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
June twenty-fifth.
Jim has a...
Yep, we can also remove fourteen C and D. We've talked with the developer this morning and he wants to look at the numbers a little more report. He goes forward with the proposal.
Does that mean we may want to remove B also?
Let's just remove fourteen.
As a whole?
Just, yeah, we'll just remove it by the fourteen. I didn't know about that one.
Okay, so we'll take fourteen all the way out then?
Yeah.
Next time?
Well, so, well, is it there something on the consent agenda that we need to approve? That's related, that's Maple Lakes?
That's Maple Grove.
That's Maple Grove.
Oh, sorry. Too many maples in town.
Okay, all right. Get your maples together, will ya? Good grief.
Okay.
All right, so we'll take fourteen off though. All right, so if all of that, then?
Motion to approve with motion, uh, set of changes to the agenda?
Second.
Okay, so Brian makes the motion, David does the second. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Good, consent agenda. See under the... Approving tonight? Let's quickly go through.
So, the Maple Lane, these are the final?
Not for Maple. For itself, but it's, it's not quite the final. The balancing change order that's also included in that, it will get us to the final, final quantities. The balancing change order is for a deduct of sixteen thousand, five hundred fifty dollars and twenty-one cents. We got a couple add-on items for that project and this cleans, cleans that all up. So we actually underran the project by about a twelve hundred dollars from the original contract price. So, we underran some items, used a little less oil. We had some estimated quantities, so we did real good on that project, so.
Okay, anybody got any other questions? Entertaining motion to accept the consent agenda as is.
So moved.
Chelsea got you.
Second.
Okay, Chelsea makes the motion, David does the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chelsea now, motion carries. All right, we'll do the approval of city council minutes from July fifteenth meeting first. You may... Anything say on that one?
Brian, I'll get them to you here.
Uh, the edit, or the, no, I've got the one that you sent before.
Yeah, you have the summary.
Has it changed since then?
You have the summary. I'll have the minutes here that I can show you again. The summary is the most important because the summary tells me the motion.
Right.
First, second, action taken. That's also supposed to send the newspaper.
Yeah, so this is the fifteenth one, right? That's what we're looking at first?
Yeah, but I'll have the complete minutes here for you. That you can see if you need to... Hit it in low here, need to refresh it.
Are you emailing it to me or what do you?
There, just if you refresh the sharepoint, it's on.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Anything else says? Dave?
Nope. I didn't see that.
Entertaining motion.
So moved.
Dave makes the motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, again, motion carries. We'll go to the five A, then that'll be the June twenty-fifth minutes. Didn't see anything on there either.
Wait, 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 did you make the change at I?
No, I was gonna bring that up here at the council.
So there was one change to the meeting minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Um, of course, it's not coming up.
All what you talked about last night.
So on the agenda item four from the special council meeting, it said council member Schmidt. That should be council member Fennelon.
Right.
Stated that.
Four, that was incorrect.
Four.
Yep.
Versus council member Fennelon, not council member Schmidt.
Yep, that was the only change I saw.
Okay. Anything else, guys, or?
Nope.
Entertaining motion to accept that with the change.
So moved.
Okay, Chelsea, give a second?
Second.
David's second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, throughout the public comment, anybody got anything you wanna chit chat about tonight? Feel free to grab the microphone. Form ones, one twice. Okay, move along to next. Jesse, I got you put down, or whoever wants to get up there and talk, I got you down to the next line item here.
Sure, so I guess Ross do one. Ross to go over, because I know you're also going over in the other department.
Yep.
So, Ross, you know, I simply came down. Certain twenty-four down, we're on the beach, you answer any questions on that. I suspected that there might be some type of, some things that I heard. And so, you know, address those. Certainly, we can address one with you as well, but I'm looking both the reports and ask questions else.
Fair, thank you.
Evening, everyone.
Evening.
Good to see ya. I'm gonna go over the numbers really quickly. I emailed it, not sure if it got sent over or not. Hundred and seventy-two calls for services month, up a little bit, but it's summertime. A lot of that's traffic related, self-initiated stuff. Four reckless driving calls, one juvenile complaint, six animal calls, two calls related to alcohol. Uh, five medical assists, thirty-seven citations and fifty-two warnings, zero parking tickets and one drug-related call, which was a minor, um, personally used kind of thing, found in the vehicle on stop, so nothing too major there. Uh, the paragraph I got is this month, we experienced a hundred and seventy-two calls for service. This number includes eleven calls related to traffic complaints as well as twenty-one calls for deputies attempting warrants or civil papers. Uh, there was an incident in town, which I'm sure you all heard about involving, uh, regarding an individual fleeing law enforcement, swimming across the river to avoid request. Um, despite the extreme nature of that, other than the fact he was probably driving recklessly at some point, he didn't really pose an inch, or pose a threat to any of the public. Um, he just doesn't like cops, so I don't think he had a real problem with anyone in the public. So while that was a dangerous situation, it got taken care of pretty quickly, so we're happy with that. Um, just reminding people, if you, um, please continue to take, using a detour around town. If you do not live on Brink or Sunnyside, there are signs up around Brink Drive now saying, that you guys put up, saying it's not a through street. Uh, we've been trying our best to stop people going through there. Um, this is an educational thing, we don't make sites for that kind of thing, just kind of pay attention to the signs kind of thing. Uh, then I got, at the end here, I got the end is in sight for the roundabout construction, I'm told, hopefully, a couple weeks.
We've been told to.
Um, so just please continue to monitor your speeds. And that's all I got. If anyone has any questions about traffic complaints or anything like that, we'll do that now.
Have you noticed any changes, I mean, in the last month, or I mean, we're still pretty much, these guys are still ringing the same amount of traffic up on Brink?
Yeah.
Sunnyside?
Um, our warnings and sites are, I think our sites are about the same. Our warnings are up by about twenty warnings overall, in this last month, opposed to the month before. Um, I've been on nights this month, July was my first cycle of nights, so I haven't personally, not a good source. Lindsay probably a better answer for that, as far as what kind of driving behavior's been going during the day, during the night. People have been driving through there, but they've been going the speed limit following stop signs, so it's positive.
But folks still aren't getting the memo not to go through there if they don't?
Yeah, no, I think a couple of stops I made were people not following the signs, people West Fargo addresses or wherever else. You know, you're welcome to drive through Horace, just when you drive past the road close sign, that's, it's a problem.
Have we had any more, probably goes to everybody, but I mean, we had any more issues with the speeding? Cause I know that's something residents have been complaining about.
Um, again, I, I guess I'm not really sure, daytime, nighttime, I haven't seen much. I think that's probably, if I haven't stopped any speeds there, I've stopped a stop sign or two, I think, maybe. But, um, as far as speeds at night, I haven't really seen much. Um, on the detour, there's been none to speak of. I've traveled it back and forth. I guess it's pretty lonely at night, I need long roads to travel, and that's a pretty long one, so.
I will speak for Sergeant Crowe, but I know he's had some fun out there. He's a friend of mine and a, and a water cyclist path on Sunnyside, when he's been there. So as a resident of Sunnyside Street, I can tell you, twenty percent increase in warnings would follow suit to what I reported last month. And we're looking forward to obviously the, uh, regular routes being taken as opposed to...
I think you and about five thousand other people are on board with that, trust me.
Five thousand cars have opened up on the street, they are really welcome. Thank you. And I thank you guys for responding and messages back from Jay Van, Van den...
Van den Neijde?
Van den...
So if I could just mention a few things here, make a few comments. Um, obviously, we have received numerous complaints in eighty-first Avenue, Wall Street, Wall Avenue, on Sunnyside. And, uh, I've been down here and I've visited with residents and I've observed it, and there is a, a large amount of traffic that's traveling through this area. Unfortunately, that's gonna happen anytime that you have a construction project and you have to divert traffic. I have the same thing going by my house right now in, in the city of Fargo, so, um, we, we have spent a numerous, numerous amount of time down here with extra deputies besides your contract deputies, trying, trying to curb some of that and getting all them visiting with residents. Um, education is power, that's why I came down here, uh, because I wanted to visit with residents and kind of let them know what we were doing as far as the plan and how we're addressing some of those concerns. I understand that we don't have a lot of people from that area, but they probably weren't expecting me to be down here as well to, to maybe visit with me. If you guys are wanting to put together any sort of a neighborhood meeting or anything like that, uh, where we could visit with, uh, with residents and, and come up with a different type of plan, maybe look at some different times, um, that we're running traffic enforcement out here, just as a presentation piece on, on what we're doing, the amount of resources that we have available and what we've dedicated to this area. I certainly would be open and, and welcoming to that. So I'll leave that up to you guys as a city council. If you, uh, any of your neighborhoods wanna do that, I certainly would come down and, and do that. But, uh, Tony is one of our sergeants and I've kind of put him as the lead on, uh, on some of the traffic complaint stuff for me. Um, he does a nice job with it, with scheduling and, and the amount, you know, where he designates resources and things like that. And, and he has been down here on his bike doing things himself, um, so that he could monitor it just as well. But we have, uh, just in a short period of time, I had him put together a document and with the amount of hours on here, and it's, it's a lot. I know we can't be down here all the time, you know, we've got one thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight square miles we have to patrol. We've got limited resources, um, as far as, as patrol and I, you know, besides the traffic complaints down here, I get them in all other places of the county as well. I had some from Alice the other day, some from Arthur, and so we gotta designate resources to those areas as well. Um, and, and I'm not making that as an excuse, I'm just, we're trying to, to mediate everything and try to come up with a happy medium here and make everyone happy. Uh, we'll continue to do that, but again, I, I would welcome, if you guys want to, put together any sort of a neighborhood, uh, informational meeting, we will do that. And we'll just continue to, to keep working there as much as we can.
I appreciate the resources you guys have allocated, just letting know we're stretching you guys then, but you know, you know, we're running into down here, so again, we really appreciate you.
No, it is, it's, I've been down here and watched it, there's a lot of traffic going through here, so.
So we've got a deal, is it, it's National Night Out coming up here, right?
We'll be down.
You guys will be down for that, maybe that's something that we can get out on our Facebook feed to let folks know that you guys will be there, so if they have questions, they can come and talk to guys directly then.
That'd be awesome.
What are we looking at for the roundabout, you both are covering the meeting today?
Do you know a chance?
I think the seventeenth is what we've been hearing.
So financial completion's the seventeenth.
It's weather dependent, as long as we can stay away from getting into a big rain event here. So, but we'll keep, they keep updating us once a week, you know, on progress, and so far, it looks like we're still on, on schedule for that. Right, Jim, I mean, you have any difference?
On the meeting where they talked about stuff on Friday, about all the sites, he referenced the seventeenth.
Yep.
And that was on Facebook, so.
That's the number we've been hearing, so that's what we're all hoping for.
But you know, through those meetings, maybe we can find out some things we don't know, as, you know, different areas, or maybe we can run some enforcement or maybe some different times. And of course, five o'clock, that complaint, that's a really hard one to work, because that's when people are getting home and that's when all, we're also getting other reports, people wanna report stuff to us. So, um, that's when most of the traffic is happening, so it's, you know, we're trying to...
It's a balance.
Suffice everyone, and...
Yep.
I don't know if you had anything else to add to it?
I have one comment I'm gonna make, and even once the roundabout opens up, um, obviously, the speed limits, if, if you've come through there, have changed. Um, so there's gonna be an education time period to kind of get people used to that. Just even coming down here tonight, um, they're still thinking that it's forty when you get, you know, past the bridge, and they're thinking it's fifty-five when they're south. So we'll be down here and we'll continue our traffic work, just to try to get some of that, uh, behavior changed as well and modify it a little bit.
Right, and I think that's another thing that we're gonna try and do is work with our PR companies, working with us on this, to try and explain that and show where that traffic speed limit change is gonna take place, so that, again, multiple efforts to try and get the education out there on what we're doing there, so.
Absolutely.
So any other questions, anyone ask for me, or, or, or office? And it does not have to be traffic related, it could be anything else?
Yeah, I, I just wanna make sure to work what's out there, that I requested Jesse to come down here to this meeting today. So it wasn't on your agenda, so that way when people see this live in video, they find out Jesse was here and they're gonna wonder why nobody was told about it. So just make sure that's out there, that was a last minute type of thing, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Glad you're able to come down.
Yeah, and if you wanna come to the next meeting, if that was fair, I can come.
Appreciate the time.
Yep, thank you guys for coming out. All right. So move along. Lucas, we got you up here, seven?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I just have some, uh, house cleaning matters, uh, for my first two items. Cup Creek first edition. We just need to do an amended second reading of the zoning ordinance, because the developer revised the lot numbers after the final plat was recorded.
Okay.
Um, which we didn't know, which changes the, how the rezone was done. So all we have to do is, is, uh, to rezone those, all the lots, we just did them all this time. No, it's all just on one document, 'cause you'll remember before we had that one where that lot twenty-two was added.
Mm-hmm.
So we did it then, well, I just did amended second reading and included all of them, they're all zoned right right now, so. Basically, just need a motion, um, approving the amended second reading of the ordinance for Cup Creek first edition.
So moved.
All right, Chelsea makes a motion, can I get a second? Okay, Brian does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Lucas, what else you got?
Uh, same song and dance for Tara Gardens, the first edition. Um, going through that one, actually, upon reviewing for Tara Garden second, uh, and I just noticed that the, um, zoning wasn't amended, because there was a plat change early on.
Is that this document, Lucas?
No, that's new for, that's new for second edition. You don't have, you don't have first edition. First edition was done last year.
Okay.
So when our zoning is done, it's done, um, during the preliminary plat phase, and that plat actually changed between preliminary and final. And again, the zoning didn't, didn't play catch up with that, so now what we're doing is having an amended second reading to reflect, um, what those lots actually are now and what they're designated as.
So we just need a motion to change that, the lot numbers?
Same thing as.
All right, it's Brian makes a motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Matt, we got the PUD here.
All right, so this is the PUD and other things related to the Tara Garden second edition. So the way to think of it, that kind of makes it easiest, is this is a preliminary plat and a rezone, and part of the rezone includes a PUD. So it's a standard plat, a standard rezone, and the PUD requires an additional document. So, uh, in front of you is the PUD agreement that, um, Lucas has been working on with the developer. Um, planning commission recommended approval of the PUD. The PUD is part of the, the, the way that I'd like to do it is, is going through the first reading of the PUD, then we can move forward with rezoning two of the lots within the preliminary plat as PUD, and then approve the, or, you know, go through the first reading of the preliminary plat and the first reading of the other rezones within the plat. So, does anybody have any questions? And I'll let Lucas talk about the agreement here.
Can you just say that one more time, you're gonna do, just to make sure?
Okay, so there's a preliminary plat.
Yep.
And then there are rezones that have to happen for the plat to become valid.
Yep, okay.
The PUD is part of that rezone. So, so we'll rezon part of the plat upon approval to R six, and part of the plat upon approval to PUD. But there's an extra step if you vote to rezon it to PUD, and that's approving a PUD agreement.
So just part of it?
It's like part of it, yeah. So PUD, the plat isn't the site plan. The PUD agreement makes the site plan inside a zone, that makes sense?
Okay.
Yep.
So within Tara Garden second edition, lots one through eighteen is just a regular subdivision, a regular development. Um, and lots nineteen and twenty is where Matt's talking about the PUD. And so that's the area that you can see there, that those are actually just two lots, and then there's a little sliver that's lot twenty-one, and that's just for park. So basically, lots one through eighteen is the development, and lots nineteen and twenty is the PUD area. So what I recommend is, um, I think it's easiest to start with the regular subdivision, because that is what you guys are familiar with, um, as a city council, you've done those before. So I'd recommend, uh, first we can discuss the rezone, um, of lots one through eighteen, which is just egg to R six. So Brian, if you...
I sent in an email, when I sent you the email.
You just sent it?
Yeah, that's that, we had it up.
Oh, it's that one?
Yep. Okay, that, I think that's the one I've got open, yes. Uh, go over one tab to the left.
Oh, this?
Yep, there you go.
There you go, so on the bottom left, those are all your regular lots, right there.
Those eighteen.
So that's lots one through eighteen, and it's just rezoning that from egg to R six. The planning commission did that at, uh, their last meeting, recommended approval to your governing body. So tonight is a regular public hearing, um, on lots one through eighteen to rezon from egg to R six.
So we just need a motion to approve that?
Yeah. Go ahead, have a public hearing then, right? That's what you're getting at? Right, yes, we'll open up for a public hearing, if anybody had any comments on the rezone from ag residential and lots one through eighteen on that plat. Anybody have anything you wanna say on it? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing on that.
Motion to approve the rezone from agriculture to R one.
R six.
R six, sorry.
It's okay, Brian made a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You want to do the public rezoning? Which one you guys wanna do next, then?
Oh, it's on that side?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's lot twenty-one, so the PUD's nineteen or twenty, so.
So the next... The next one we can do is, uh, the rezone from egg to PUD and then egg to, uh, public facilities. So lots nineteen and twenty...
The two big ones.
Will be...
This one right here?
The PUD area. Yep, and then lot twenty-one is that little sliver right there.
Right here?
Nope, down.
Here?
To your right, sorry.
Oh, this one?
Nope, the little triangle even further to the right.
To the right.
Oh, here.
There, yep. Okay, so right south of that, there's already an existing park, um, so that little sliver didn't really fit as anything else, so we just rezoned it to, uh, public facilities. So right now, the, the rezone, um, for this one would be, uh, nineteen and twenty would be egg to PUD, and twenty-one would be egg to public facilities. Could've done another last one, but... Okay.
Need the public input?
Yes.
On this one as well?
Yes, we'll open up public hearing for, uh, lots nineteen and twenty, rezone from egg to PUD. Anybody's got any comments, questions on that? Okay, if not, I'll close the public hearing on that. And I'll accept a motion to accept the rezone on those two lots on egg to PUD.
Motion to read?
Nope.
Got it.
So moved. Okay, Dave, got it?
Second.
Motion, I'm gonna do the second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 So you wanna do lot twenty-one from...
You, I think you did that as part of...
We did that as part of, so that was covered, that was together.
So then the last step is the PUD agreement itself?
Well, we can do the preliminary plat.
Preliminary plat, right.
So do the preliminary plat, and then we'll get into the actual PUD agreement. So the preliminary plat, um, again, as your regular subdivision would be, your one through eighteen is on there. And then your PUD ordinance actually requires, uh, the PUD to go through the plating process as well. So we just included them all on one plat. So tonight is your, uh, preliminary plat public hearing. Again, planning commission did this at their last meeting, and they recommended approval to your body. And the big crux of what we're gonna do tonight is that next agreement that really outlines what they can actually use, um, in that PUD area.
Mm-hmm.
So right now, it's just basically, here's what the preliminary plat looks like, if you have any changes, now would be the time to make them.
Okay, so we'll open it up for a public hearing, preliminary plat, what we got? Tara Gardens two? Anybody got any discussion, comments, questions? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing.
Motion to approve the preliminary plat review?
Second.
Brian does the motion, Dave does the second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we're done with this view, right now it's the PUD agreement?
Yep, PUD agreement would be the, the next big one. Okay, so much like you have your, uh, developer agreements, an improvement district agreement, uh, for different type of development situations, you now have a PUD agreement that applies to, uh, lots nineteen and twenty for this PUD district. Basically, what the agreement is doing is it's creating an ordinance in place of your typical zoning ordinance that you have, like your R ones, your R twos, that type of designation. You now will have a PUD ordinance for just this development, just for lots nineteen and twenty. So, we walked through it step by step with the planning commission. I'm not sure how great of detail you want me to go through this agreement, but all it's doing is, it's us working with the developer, the city working with the developer, to kind of outline the setbacks that are there, uh, the streetlight plan, the landscape plan, uh, sidewalks. Basically, anything you see on that site plan right there is how they can develop lots nineteen and twenty, and that is what this agreement outlines. And if they change any of that, they have to go back in front of the planning commission and back in front of the city council for a PUD agreement amendment. So it's up to you, I guess, on, on the detail you want me to get into with this, uh, PUD agreement.
Think you probably hit the highlights unless there's something else in there, but I mean, it's just...
And the chairman of planning commission's here as well, he can add anything that he may want to add to it, but, I mean, we really worked through this and there was, uh, four different versions of this agreement between the city and the developer, um, just to try to address any issues that, that we could, um, with this PUD.
Anything you wanna add to that, Russ, or?
No, we're good, it was a, a long...
Yeah.
Painful process.
I understand.
This is the first one of these in the city of Horace.
Right.
So the reason this is being a PUD is because it's a multifamily?
Well, our current multifamily ordinance is, and this makes it very difficult to develop talent loans in this current market. We have a minimum building width that is, to many developers, not feasible. So this developer shows to pursue, one of the reasons, in my understanding, is the main reason, that is, that's the main reason, just to pursue it through a PUD. Um, this has also showed us what is, types of multifamily, or developers are willing to build in Horace, and it's, will also allow us to in time, write an R five ordinance or new multifamily ordinance, and, um, begin to, you know, return that, good multifamily to vested development. So this has a long range, a positive longer-term application for the city as well, so staff recommended approval of this.
One of the things that will more than likely happen is, is this PUD will drive ordinance changes so that next time it won't require a PUD.
Right.
And it'll be the same for other, if we see any other PUDs anytime in the near future. They will generally drive an ordinance change so that they'll fit, so that we, we have an ordinance that actually works for what we'd like to see happen.
Yeah, so it's fairly typical in time. It might be long after we're all gone, this would be zoned back into something standard in time, but the only way to carry this forward the way it is is with a PUD. And that's all...
And that's only if we change your ordinance to add a, to update one of the R...
So there is a draft, there's an update R five draft that's been, hasn't had a public hearing yet, but it's been, it's in the editing process. And that, this would comply with that. And that's the goal, so.
Okay.
All right, maybe else, any other questions?
So are these streets private or city?
With the PUD, they're private.
Okay.
Anything else you want to add on that?
All the site plans, development plans are all referenced in that agreement and they have to comply with that. So basically, whatever you're seeing here is how that gets developed out there, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we enforce that document in terms of where buildings are set and things like that.
So basically, right now, all we're doing is looking for a motion to accept the PUD agreement, is what you're...
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Chelsea gives a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 GMs passes, okay.
So can you update everybody on what needs to then go through a second reading? Does the PUD agreement have to go through a second reading?
Uh, the rezones will do the second reading.
Rezones only.
Yep. And then their, the preliminary plat will come in.
The PUD agreement is not read again?
No. Thank goodness, right?
We got another one. Okay. We will now be on number twelve.
Okay, so you got number twelve, Matt, so look at it.
This is just a second reading for the Decker subdivision rezone that was discussed two weeks ago. This is rezoning of three lots and bring subdivision from SR to R one.
Any changes since that?
No changes. No, we've even gotten the final plats back.
You have gotten the final plats?
Yeah, they're in the review process now.
Motion approved.
Okay.
Second.
Brian? All in favor, say aye.
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 Brian, motion carries. All right, moving on to number thirteen. That would be...
Yeah, you guys are moving too fast, Sam.
Come on, you guys, stay with us here, buddy.
Well, you jumped around and I guess...
Slow engineer type.
So anyways, what you have before you is a water sewer storm, a street approved district number two thousand nineteen dash six, Cub Creek. This is a engineering services agreement for the construction engineering of that subdivision. It's pretty much our standard plate. We do have some fees in here for design engineering. That's review and planning and coordination prior to the fitting. The design engineering is not part of the project that is designed by the developer. He hired someone to do it.
Do I have the document?
Should have.
What's it called?
It should be the engineering services agreement.
I'll look for it, Brian. Oh, is it up? Should be on there.
Damn, I'm not seeing it out there, but I'll find it otherwise.
So. Got a breakdown based upon, this one is pretty aggressive. We've been told by the contractor that they are going to be very aggressive on this six days a week, if not seven days a week. So we based our construction on a hundred and twenty-five working days, twenty-five weeks worth of weeks worth. And we've got a breakdown in man owner's expense sheet at the end, so I don't think we need to bore everyone with that. But this is all along the lines of Terragardens. This is what we use as our model for what we had on Terragardens, so. I guess if you have any questions, I don't know if you'll be able to find it, but...
Is this, is this going to be done in two phases then, in terms of stuff this fall and then stuff next spring?
It's not planned to be done that way. I take that back. Yes. There's going to be a small amount of sixty-third street, which is between the school and Cub Creek. There's the main north-south road there. There's some sidewalks, some gratings, some fence and some landscape amenities that were being put in as part of the Cub Creek project that will be dug and brought into next year. But the bulk of it, the paving, the water, the sewer, all that is to be done this year by contract.
How many weeks?
This breaks, this goes into next year.
Okay.
This, our contract goes into next year to cover those costs.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so that's why. And it's an orderly not to exceed. That's the way it's written inside.
Okay, do you have any questions on that? Jimmy, anything else you want to talk about on that?
Okay, hang on, I'm going to open it up and just walk up here briefly.
Yep.
Okay, it's on SharePoint. If you guys want to pull it down.
Man owner's... Like I said, it's a pretty aggressive schedule.
Well, this is a pretty standard...
It's just our standard, when there's a break, tell me hours.
Okay, here's it.
And the cost for this goes to the project, so just wanted to stress that.
So this is, this is basically budgeted already in the, in the project anyway?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a not to exceed of four eighty-six.
Hundred and twenty-five days then, Jim?
What's that?
Hundred and twenty-five days, or working days?
So we have an estimate. It depends on how the contractor goes about it.
Got it.
They're the same contractor from Terragardens, so they got to it.
Okay.
So that's based upon...
When is this construction expected to start?
Has started. It started last Thursday.
Okay, motion approved.
Go ahead, shake, sort of screen it.
Okay, Brian, make some motion. Can we get a second?
Second.
Chelsea gives a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, GMs passes. Okay, so we're going to skip past fourteen. We're going to fifteen here.
So Mr. Mayor, item fifteen is just an access easement from Southeast Cass Water Resource District to the city of Horace, granting access across drain twenty-seven in Cub Creek addition. They didn't want the plat to have the street over drain twenty-seven. They just wanted to provide this so they have more control over the city's involvement with it. The big thing that you have to know with this one is anytime that the city's doing any work around drain twenty-seven for that, for eighty-first street, I believe, the city has to provide the plans to Southeast Cass so they can ensure that it's not going to damage drain twenty-seven. So that's, that's the biggest thing with this one.
As a street parlor plate, I would think, because...
And then the city is responsible for, I guess, if anyone tries to sue, if they get hurt. It's not on Southeast Cass, it'll be on the city.
They don't want to deal with that, huh?
I guess not.
Okay.
No action is needed for this. It's just an update, just very much.
So this is a draft of the easement? Or this is the easement that Southeast Cass has actually proposed at this point?
It's the easement that they are giving the city.
Okay, all right. So we can approve this? You guys can approve this?
Oh, you. I thought that was an update. Oh, okay. I guess Luke is saying you guys can approve it.
So we need to approve that we're accepting this easement?
Correct.
To Southeast Cass?
Yeah, and then they're going to vote on it at their next meeting.
You have any issues with it? You've reviewed it?
I made revisions to it.
And they...
And I sent it to Southeast Cass for them to make the modifications. I modified the indemnification language because I didn't like what they put on the city.
So those have not been incorporated?
Their board hasn't seen it at all.
Okay.
Their attorney wanted you guys to look at it first and then send it to them.
So what we would approve today would include your...
Based on my revisions.
Okay.
Okay. I believe we approve the easement.
Make some motion to approve.
Second?
Yeah.
So contract.
Brian, you do the second?
Yep.
All right, so all in favor, say aye.
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 GMs, so, okay, pass that along to him with this one.
I'll do it.
Hey, Brenton, you're going to talk about mosquitoes.
Okay, I got, I got the fun topics, so.
Yeah.
Uh, I invited Ben Paray through here from Cass County Vector Control. He's the director of that group to come and talk a little bit about mosquito control, what the county has done. Uh, we've worked with Ben and his group a little bit more aggressively this year and just doing a additional agreement to have more mitigation efforts done in Horace. Uh, he has some interesting information on how much money has actually been put into Horace and how much chemical has been used. Also, the effectiveness of aerial spraying. That has been a popular topic as of late. We've been asked quite frequently, how come we don't aerial spray? One is we do see a reduction in trap count numbers when we do our truck mount spraying. Sometimes we have to do it two nights in a row or close together, maybe one night on, one night off, one night on again. But we do see quite a bit of reduction in our mosquito count set when we do that. Aerial spraying, our, quite a few of our neighbors, Fargo, Moorhead, West Fargo, even Oxbow, have done aerial sprays. Ben could talk about the success of that. When you do aerial spray, and we talked about this during the special council meeting on twenty-fifth, it's an expensive investment and we have, you're rolling the dice to make sure you get your return. But you could get into areas where the truck mounts can't. So that's the advantage, disadvantage, and like I said, he could elaborate more on that. I wanted him to give his perspective to the council. That way you guys could hear that before you take any action. Uh, on the twenty-fifth, as you recall, we're talking about increasing the vector fee to two fifty instead of a dollar. Other conversations during that meeting were, do we even go up to five dollars? If we were to do two fifty, we'd be able to cover the cost of one aerial spray a year. And we get closer to breaking even on our other costs. Not quite, but closer. If we go to five, that gives us a couple aerial sprays in our back pocket to use and be able to cover majority of our costs for mosquito spraying from public works side and that we contract with Cass County Vector Control for. So there's some pros and cons there. I understand there's probably some folks that would like to give their perspectives or residents that may want to chime in their perspectives too. So Ben, if you could highlight what you think would be helpful in their decision making?
We'll make graphics just for you.
I can, yeah, I can, I'll email it to you.
Email it?
Okay.
So just to review, there's a special funding tax issued for Cass County Vector Control, which you, of course, are a part of. Typically in an annual year that provides about twelve thousand dollars of mill levy expenditures. Uh, on top of that, we do about a twelve thousand dollars additional special service fee that is pretty ubiquitous actually between your neighbors and, and most of the metro area, if you will. So in total, we look at a total, let's call it, operational budget of like twenty-four thousand dollars is what, is what we take out of the city of Horace. Uh, to date here, this is our most recent figure through July thirty-first. And my apologies, I made copies and then I abruptly forgot them, as you do. Uh, but to date, you can look at just the materials alone applied to the city of Horace. On the left, you have a map of some, the centroid or the center of those sites that we're inspecting. Uh, there's a graph or, excuse me, a chart to the, in the middle that talks about material amount and then a material cost as well. Uh, to date through, well, not to date, but to the thirty-first of July, we've already expended twenty-four thousand in products, eleven thousand in additional labor charges. And that doesn't even include the additional acreage that was, was approved in that previous, or in the, the trial contract or this one-year agreement that we signed for, extraterritorial space and so forth. So at this stage, you're getting a very, very good deal in terms of return on investment. Horace definitely leads in terms of your sister communities, in terms of dollars in versus output in terms of field labor and spraying. Uh, what you're doing with your truck mount spraying is brilliant. I would recommend all cities follow your model. Having that level of control definitely takes a lot of pressure off me, you know, in particular to try and cover an additional, you know, twenty to thirty square miles of those type of applications. And, and as Brenton identified, that has been helpful. Just today, the traps came in and, and you're, you're exceeding, essentially, you're doing better than most of the, the Cass metropolitan area and certain areas.
First question? Sorry, it's for Brenton. But the money that's been expended, does that include our costs related to our, the city guys doing the truck spraying? Is that additional cost?
The numbers that Ben is showing you is just not...
It's purely Cass County.
So we've spent more by the, our public works guys doing additional spraying as well?
We've gone through, uh, cost-wise, just in chemical alone, probably around two thousand dollars worth of chemical just this year. And we just ordered another barrel here just the other day.
Yeah, and this is, this is an outlier year too. I should, I should point that out. Other seasons, you know, across the board, you're not necessarily unique here that there are problems in Horace or specific to your area. Uh, and certainly, um, there's limitations to the corrections that you can do. Uh, as Brenton kind of led into, aerial is expensive. Uh, it is kind of the, you know, crown jewel of our overall operations, but those are funded primarily through the cities. And we, we ask them to, they request those, those services. Through the contracts with Fargo and West Fargo, however, the county has provided one aerial spray along with that. And we do block out areas along the Cheyenne River with that spray going into Horace for that first, the first seasonal application with that aircraft. So you are getting benefits directly to, in part, to those type scenarios, but definitely not a full coverage given primarily the, yeah, again, that ROI being, you know, two to one in some cases. And this year, we still have at least another five weeks of mosquito control season left. So that number is going to obviously keep going up and, and we're happy to do it. So that's, hopefully, you know, maybe calm some of the tempers down that there's not enough being done. Uh, this is probably the most we've ever expended in Horace in, in any one given season. So, uh, and throughout the metropolitan area as well. So budgets will be, will be relatively thin in the coming, coming days, but we have reserves. We're prepared for that. Questions about aerial spraying or traps or...
So has the trend, well, I'm assuming the trend has been on a downward?
Over the past...
Trend, because there was like a peak, I mean, three weeks ago where the trap counts and it was off the charts.
Yeah, and it depends on where you're at, you know. July, we saw almost eight inches of rain in different areas and rain equals mosquitoes. Uh, you have a river corridor running through the middle of your city. That is, brings huge challenges, especially for flooding and those areas inundate and you have problems. Uh, but those numbers have been on the reduction just because we've finally dried out to a significant degree over the last two weeks.
Mother nature is helping, but the spraying has helped as well.
It does, and that is intermittent, you know, I mean, that has a, maybe an active period of thirty minutes where that spray is in the air, where it might kill those mosquitoes, and that goes with aerial spraying as well. And then what happens, you know, you might get a couple days in a bad situation with, with a truck fog or an aerial spray. And then mosquitoes are flying in, they're migrating, they're hatching out and causing additional problems. So to think that aerial spraying or one truck spraying event would be the end-all, be-all would be, you know, false to assume that.
So the thing is, is I mean, for all those people that say that truck or that aerial spraying is the Cass Meow, it's the best solution that we should be doing as a city. I mean, is it either that or is it more frequent truck along the way? Or what is that combination that should be, we should be targeting?
We, I think aerial has an important role at times, but I think the expectations for it to just come in and slay everything is, is, is false. Given what the sequence of events that we saw through the month of July, you mentioned the city of Oxbow and others. You know, they sprayed either too early or they sprayed right in the middle. Things kept wave after wave after wave of coming in. And a lot of those jurisdictions had actually expended their entire annual aerial application budget in, in July. Cass County, city of Fargo, West Fargo have already expended all four of their planned, our planned scheduled aerial sprays, just to give you an idea of how, how severe the conditions have been. And it harkens back to two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, relatively. Two thousand and eleven specifically was a very wet year and raised these similar kinds of challenges. And it's a relative off year for that.
If they've already expended their budgets, then are we, you know, are their trap counts still comparable to what we're seeing now?
They're, yours are lower in some instances compared to some of the areas that we aerial sprayed even this week. So this, this Saturday. So again, your guys out in the field, we calibrate your trucks, we help you with the, with the product and stuff. They're doing a good job, I think. And that level of flexibility that's offered to your city is, again, is brilliant. It's helpful for me, it's helpful for your residents and, you know, as long as the product is getting to the mosquitoes, it's going to work.
Brenton, you have a question?
Just really quick. I'm, I'm familiar with how the spraying and the fog actually works.
Sure.
Does it, does it only kill the mosquitoes that are flying or is it something that they pass on to other mosquitoes type of thing?
No.
Does it go inert when it hits the ground?
So, that's a great question. So the, the product itself is a, both aerial and the ground fog applications. It's a general insecticide, something that you would find on peppers and fruits and vegetables. that you would find on peppers and fruits and vegetables, except it's cut into tiny, tiny droplets, uh, on average of twenty microns, about the size of like a human cell. So when that's flying through the air, that actually has to make contact directly to the flying insects. And that's why timing of those applications is important. Uh, you can't spray before they hatch off the water and expect to get a knockdown. Uh, you can't spray when it's too windy or too cold because you really need those mosquitoes to be mobile. The larva sighting component, which is illustrated up here on the graphic, uh, shows what we're trying to do to knock out those larval mosquitoes in those habitats. And your final point, um, the product is generally inert once it touches soil. Um, you're not seeing anything that, uh, you know, we're not killing crickets on the ground. We're not seeing ants, anything die unfortunately at times. Uh, but certainly, uh, certainly there are some negative consequences with, with, uh, these types of sprays. You can kill butterflies and bees and beneficial insects and some of those things. Uh, but, uh, I think human wellbeing, human health can be paramount at times.
The, um, the, you see those people go around and throw handfuls of like grain or whatever it is into the water stuff? Is that, that's for the, the spawn stuff like that?
Yeah. Those are larval mosquito treatments, the larvicide. So, um, if you look closely, the, the highest number on there is, uh, Vecto Back G, which is a biological or bacterial insecticide. It is a natural pathogen of mosquito larvae. They ingest it and it actually only kills mosquitoes and, um, and black flies, given the specific kind of biology between those two organisms. So that is very, very low toxicity to birds, bees, humans, dogs, cats, you name it. It is a, a, you know, perfectly, again, organically certified agri ingredient. And it does a really wonderful job of, of knocking those things down. But being problems as they are, you need a multi-.
Right. Is that only activated by water? Do you see them, no, nobody throws them in like your yard or they throw them like your ponds?
Yeah. So primarily returning standing waters.
Okay.
With those types of applications. We have certain products that can be applied to dry ground that will eventually flood. So, so there are some of those situations, but that's not anything that would repel adult mosquitoes or anything of that, of that nature.
Thanks for the.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I mean, first of all, I want to thank all of you for being good stewards of our money. I know you're, you're concerned about that and you, you watch over that and you're looking at these sort of activities. Um, I don't dispute that the foggers are helping in town. I don't live in town. So I see when you go street to street, it's going to really cover things well because you're going to have one street and then behind, I, I back up to the river. So when they come by my house and it's usually about, say nine o'clock at night and, um, it's probably dark, even maybe even later sometimes, they go pretty fast. And we get maybe just a little bit of a loft and that's about all we get out there. Um, and I'm sure, like I said, they're, they're covering a great amount of, of area and, and they're, they're doing a good job. It's just, it's not helpful for us out there. It's, it's actually really bad out where we are. Um, and we feel like the aerial spray is the only way that you can get at some of that stuff by the river. But I also want to comment that behind us in Eagle Grove, you're probably aware of that massive pond they have back there, which is just completely covered with algae. That has to be a breeding ground.
And we do have all of our, our larval habitats documented in, in Horace or fairly well. Um, there's a link on our website. It's castcountyindee.gov slash vector or mosquito. Uh, either one of those links will get you there. And it shows all of the sites that, it says larvicide breeding sites. Uh, so some scientific, but, um, specifically outlines ponds, puddles, you know, ditches, streams, uh, things of that nature that we feel, or that we frequently visit. So I would definitely encourage you to take a look at that if you think there is something missing. Um, to your other point, that aerial spray at times, um, certainly I know in the metropolitan area, uh, the truck mounted sprayers primarily, uh, they say an effective range of about six hundred, excuse me, three hundred feet. You can get some level of control beyond that, but there are some places that, that certainly, uh, benefit from aerial, especially when you're looking at suburban or rural kinds of scenarios where you have streets and things that don't, uh, that aren't, you know, grid like, uh, so you don't have that good overlap. But in both cases, we're, um, beholden to the wind. So, uh, the challenge, I think, for the city of Horace would be you're so long north to south as opposed to east to west. Uh, you could only really spray even aerially on a night where you would have some component of east or west in that breeze. Uh, because again, it's not what's happening at the nozzle of the sprayer, it's what's happening three hundred feet downwind of that, as that spray is being cut up into those various tiny, tiny molecules and making those contacts. So, uh, even in dense trees, there's times where aerial doesn't even penetrate as well if you don't have a good, a good cross. So there are some, some challenges and benefits to both. Uh, the cost is astronomically more, but at sometimes it's, um, a silver bullet to, you know, to call.
Well, I haven't noticed in the past, and I, I haven't noticed it recently, years past, I think it's one of your guys that's actually had like an ATV moment fogger where certain times of day, well, they all, they actually drove through my backyard and fogged in certain areas. And I went, wow, okay, who's this driving my backyard? Oh, it's Vector Control, they're spraying. I went, that's awesome. So is that hap- is that still happening or not?
It is actually. So, uh, the challenge is, is that we're always a larvicide first situation. You have the best bang for the buck when you're killing the larval mosquitoes before they hatch out. It's better for the environment and it's typically less expensive and, and you have, you know, proactive results opposed to just always chasing your tail with adult mosquitoes. Um, for, uh, we really got kind of jammed up with the amount of rainwater that we, we accumulated in the early part of July. So that really is what the, the main challenge was, is that we were focusing very heavily on water, doing as much truck spraying as we could. And now, just in the recent days, we've been going back and revisiting those sites and trying to apply again with ATVs or even on foot. Uh, I have a bill for a child slide because we ran over one of some guy's slide in his backyard for his kids, uh, in West Fargo just the other day. And he was less than thrilled by it, but there are negative consequences to that as well. And that just is a challenge, is very labor intensive and is very challenging. But when you have really densely wooded areas, um, that can be, that can be a good, um, you know, a good tool to have. It's just that it, it's kind of low in the priority in terms of the mix of the overall benefits of the efficacy with what we can provide.
Well, I was just thinking in, in your scenario, in, in that back area and it's heavily wooded, right? It had, I, I could see that depending on the wind direction, one side of the street's going to get the benefit where the other side, you know, might not get much benefit at all because.
For that evening, yeah.
For that evening, because there's really only one street. There's no two streets to really, you know, let that, that, that insecticide drift. So is that a case where something maybe that we should consider is getting a ATV mounted fogger that could allow us, not only you, but allow us to, you know, fog those areas depending on the wind direction?
Yeah. And that's a potential, you know, um, that would be something that you certainly could look into and see if there's some benefit. Like, you know, if, if that were, um, something that you had in-house, certainly that, you know, I would say you would, you want to use it. We send out all of our equipment with, uh, even when we're doing larval control over these past few weeks, everybody goes out with a backpack sprayer to kill adults, uh, in case they come across an area that's especially bad or, um, there's just a target of opportunity, if you will, to, to handle that. So that would be something else you could yet potentially incorporate as well into your, your fleet or your assets. But again, what you're really doing is you're just taking the spray to where the sites that need it the most, right? And potentially at a less cost than what an aerial, one single aerial application would be.
Well, that's, that's what I'm thinking. Is it, is it more effective to do more frequent truck based, you know, targeted versus one shot and rolling the dice with one big expensive spray?
Yeah. I would say the, the former, you know, multiple applications. There's times even this year where we've, you know, we've truck sprayed, truck sprayed and aerial sprayed, you know, in the same week, uh, in, in certain areas. Or, um, there's times where, well, you know, it takes multiple adult aside applications to, to really bring, um, bring some level of control, as fleeting as that may be in, in seasons like this. So, um, yeah, certainly one, one application can be really great for a short while. Um, but, um, I would say a higher frequency would be, be worth a shot a, as well too.
Cause we know we can get a lot more ground sprays than just.
Absolutely.
One bang on the, on the plane, you know. I know you're taking chances with that too, but I know what we do. I know, it's just, it's one of those things where it's just, we're trying to figure out how we get the bang, you know, and use the equipment that we have.
Because it's several thousand dollars for a thirty second relief or thirty minute relief is, is, is challenging. And, and really the, the core thing is that we're, we're looking at broad area. So we're, we're, we're spraying something like fifty thousand acres when we do Fargo, West Fargo and Moorhead. And that's all contiguous, right? So, um, if you live on, you know, off a main avenue in the, you know, middle of town, you should be at the center of gravity of where that effort is. And mosquitoes shouldn't really make it into town that far. Um, and really it's, it's a, it's a game of geography and, and covering as much as you can. So it has some benefits to us and it, it, uh, keeps, uh, keeps me home at least once, once a month or so.
It's monitoring traps and making sure that we are getting what we expect when we do the multiple, uh, trucks in the evening rounds and stuff. So far it looks like that's just been working too.
Has knocked down quite a bit. Now, what I was going to mention too, Ben, is, uh, if you could elaborate a little bit is what folks will do for spraying like their own yard. That is a different type of spraying, different chemical application than what we do for our truck spraying.
Yes.
That stuff is a little longer term.
Yeah.
It'll last, it depends on how much rainfall you have. My, my understanding is just sometimes it'll last two or three weeks and sometimes it'll last for six or seven, just depending on how lo- how much rain we've had. But those are, uh, longer term repellent or deterrent for mosquitoes.
Those are for residual adult applications. And that's a product that, um, that typically you'd see sprayed on like beets or, you know, crop type sprays. Uh, we focus on foliage. Um, shelter belts is a great example, uh, where you would go through and spray those perimeters, uh, both inside and outside upwards of like six feet. So you're not spraying turf, you're spraying, uh, overgrown shrubbery, things of that nature. Maybe spraying around your patio and your deck and some of those things. And that's something that we, we, we most commonly do, um, in public spaces and public parks and golf courses and so on and so forth when we're, um, looking for, you know, optimal conditions. Now, when it comes to individual properties and things, um, that's something that we don't offer as a service to individual homeowners per se. Um, however, as I mentioned, we crushed the child slide, uh, given that we were working alongside of a river, alongside of a park, uh, on some of those areas. So there's a, a broader community benefit when it comes to that. But I don't think it's feasible for either the city of Horace or Cass County Vector Control to say, okay, we can spray every yard to perfection as you would, um, as you would maybe want in those scenarios. We're looking for the best.
The question I would have then, yeah, I know that wouldn't be feasible, but does the county provide larvicide so the residents could come and get some to put in their yards or like in standing water areas that they know of, like a perennial type of thing?
I would recommend, um, that you go to our website and you can send in service requests. Cause we, we are here, uh, every day. So we have a staff member here every day of the season, if not more. Um, I'm sure you've seen our four wheeler crews shooting.
Cause you guys are probably hitting those spots.
Yeah.
We get, I get questions on that every once in a while.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll just pass that along.
Yeah. I think certainly, you know, if they, if they had questions, they wanted to comment, I, you know, all of this data I get in real time. When people make these applications, we can provide that. Uh, the products that we have, there's nothing special. You don't need a license except for government to, to, to use them. Uh, you can go to Menards or wherever and pick up the same stuff. Um, but, uh, for the most part, we, um, we do a pretty good job of mapping out these, these standing water sites. Uh, but I definitely would encourage folks just to double check to make sure we're not missing something. Um, but, um, you know, we're, we're a big geographic area. Mosquitoes can fly ten, fifteen miles, right? So we're talking mosquitoes from Kindred literally making it here, you know, mosquitoes from Saban.
We have new developments going on. We know it's going to change some of the geography a little bit. So we monitor when something like that happens where we have more standing water.
Yeah.
Get a question again, go ahead.
Um, I was just checking, where are your traps in the Horace area? Are they in town or are they out of town?
Uh, they mostly are along like the county seventeen corridor here. So we have three. There's one north, um, Riverdale area. And then the last two, I can't recall their names. Uh, but, um, they're, they're kind of spread north to south, north, central and, and southern is, is kind of the, uh, where you're at. So they're not, you know, sitting over a parking garage or anything like that.
Can you see a difference between north, south and central?
Uh, at times, yes. At times. It's, uh, we definitely can see when, when, uh, your public works folks are out foggy because their traps are better than ours. And we need to kind of catch up. Uh, but you can see that. I know last week we saw, I'm not sure what nights you guys were out, but, um, Horace was, was ahead of us in terms of, uh, overall mosquito numbers across those traps, uh, in those locations. And now those aren't perfect. You know, those aren't going to illustrate the whole story for every house, for every person. Uh, but they are the best, one of the best models we have, uh, for what, um, you know, hopefully what, you know, can we can make the corrections that we can.
Are those traps expensive or can somebody request one, like can she request one that needs placed in her neighborhood?
Yeah, certainly that is something that we could consider. I know we went from just one or two traps in the past few years up to three. It does, we spend additional man hours and things, which clearly we're trying to keep as close to as what's reasonable as possible. Uh, but if they were an outlier situation, we can certainly put, you know, either portable traps or put something more permanent there or maybe move a location that is currently, you know, in place or something of that order, uh, just to compare or even run one for a day or two or three to, um, have a look at. I should also note, you know, there are private vendors that, that do, you know, make applications. They'll come back, you know, as requested to do individual parcels, individual properties. Um, and just, uh, you know, in conjunction back to the running over the slide incident, you know, we're probably looking more into that as being our forward progress of saying, um, you know, we really need to focus on public spaces and less about individual yards. So certainly there, uh, you know, that, there is finally a number of services that are available, um, in the past where government could come in and take that role and say, okay, we'll do that because there's no options. Um, that is no longer the case. So certainly those folks, they're, they're trying to get licenses. I've worked with most of them. I've opened up my playbook to say, this is where the holes are. Um, they'll go and make money and kill, kill some stuff. And, um, hopefully they're responsive. But even in those instances, I know, uh, there are, uh, less than ideal outcomes. You know, challenges still remain, even if you spray every day in a week. Um, it's been a, it's been a tough year.
Well, if your neighbor doesn't do it, you do it, there's a big problem.
Well, not necessarily. So, um.
It'd be good for us. We sprayed individually in our yard too. But it may last, but not long.
Yeah. So it really, you know, contingent on how much rain you get. And, uh, you know, the other types of situations, we have a lot of really good information on our website that outlines these different styles or techniques of applications between, this is what you do in sand water and this is what you do when you want a residual adult control products. And these are the products that are used there. And then also the aerosol foggers and the thermal foggers. I walk through on our website, all of that information on, as a homeowner, um, and it's predominantly for the folks who have farms set up and, you know, weeding the township or something like that, uh, out of their own, which we provide as no service to. Uh, at least some tools to be able to try, at least attempt to try on their own if they're uncomfortable with hiring a service or don't feel like they'd like to do that. Uh, so really that, you know, three-pronged approach, you know, you're getting the larval control from the county. I think you're getting as good as what you can be expected really realistically with a truck spraying for, uh, uh, from the city of Horace. And then, uh, as homeowners and things, there, there certainly is, you know, challenges and things to be undertaken as well. And, uh, and some years it just takes some deet as well too. So.
Is there, is there a link on Horace's homepage to you guys?
That's, I'm not sure.
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I don't think so.
We could add one.
We could add one.
Yeah. If you just Google Cass Vector, we, we pop up the first link and, and, uh, there's a whole section dedicated to tips to what a homeowner can do, what they should expect, um, and, uh, what kinds of things they could, you know, realistically accomplish on their own. But even that said, there's times where you just got to go inside. Cause this is, this year has just been, has been, you know, relatively challenging and very expensive.
So is the FM area, do they do any ton fogging too, or do they just do aerial?
We truck spray, uh, as well. So, uh, some years we do no fogging or anything. Uh, we won't do aerial or ground if not needed. And those are, you know, uncommon years as well. But, uh, we've done four, uh, truck mounted sprays and we've done four aerial sprays. Uh, we, we rushed one out in June, early June. We had a heavy rainstorm and then a, that was actually the end of May and then some of that high heat rolled in and kind of stuck around for a while. Uh, but we had to burn our first aerial right on June tenth, which is two to three weeks earlier than normal. So we would normally have that in the bag still, but at the time, I didn't have licensed pesticide applicators to do it. So, uh, so it is a mixed, uh, combination. And, um, for us, it really does, you know, provide, you know, essentially a night off. And, and we know we have good applicators. Everyone custom, I'm sure you're working with are great to work with. Uh, but that comes at a relatively large expense. Uh, as your city grows, uh, you get infill, that might be a good option, uh, as your tax base and things in, increase. Uh, but with, uh, currently it looks like there's really just this area in town needs to be sprayed or, or, or I'm sorry, uh, you know, different cutoff subdivisions and blocks that, uh, would be challenging if you didn't spray through the middle of those areas. So, um, it's really not a, I wouldn't say it would be a great use to say, well, we'll put the aircraft in one spot and truck spray others. Um, you would really want to combine that all into one night's application.
Do you, is there any other small talents about our sites that do aerial spraying?
Uh, well, Oxbow, Hickson and Baki all grouped together. Another city of Kindred, um, recently started adding, uh, funds in the past few years and they have done aerial spraying. Um, their, their community is only about a square mile or less. Um, uh, I'm not sure what Castleton does. They have their own truck sprayer, but I don't believe they have done any, any, uh, any aerial spraying at this stage. Um, the city of Castleton also, uh, um, much as you folks do, they, they don't have a truck mount, well, they have a truck mounted fogger, uh, but they also have a UTV with a boomless system that they go and do this, these barrier spray applications as well, uh, with using similar products and techniques that we're using. uh with using similar products and, and techniques that we're using. Uh and the, have reasonable success as much as could be expected in, in difficult conditions. Uh looking elsewhere, I think even the city of Arthur and, and uh, you know, uh, you know, your amenities and things like that on occasion will go and uh and upfront the cost for, for an aerial spray. But now we're talking about, you know, one square mile, six hundred and forty acres. You know, at three dollars an acre or something thereabouts, whatever they quoted you, you know, that's eighteen hundred dollars whereas looking at something where ideally you would need that coverage to exceed, I don't even know what they quoted you, probably couple thousand acres, two thousand acres or more, I would think. Uh as a, as a contiguous spray block. Now we're talking about, you know, relatively significant investments for, for one evening.
About eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, our, our cost was right at, pretty much right at eight thousand. It was like seventy-nine hundred fifty dollars or something.
We can do an awful lot of truck spraying for eight K, boy. That's the thing. That's what we're just trying to balancing at to make sure that we use the money properly so we get bang for the buck.
Absolutely. And, and the one thing that I will, uh, we, we did do this extended e- extraterritorial space contract this year. Um we have been super slopped down, so I will say we've underperformed on that uh to date. So uh we are kind of getting in better shape and next year we have better plans. Uh we've added additional u- utility vehicles and things uh to try and follow up on that. Um but um I would say that we were a little late to the show on that in terms of our output in those areas. Uh but we have focused very heavily, as you can see, uh for the city of, of Horace. And these are all uh based upon records that are federal requirements for the EPA, uh North Dakota Department of Ag, et cetera. So um they're uh, they're, they cannot be falsified unless, you know, I'm going to jail or what have you. But um so certainly um it's a challenge and I know it's, it's frustrating and brief summers definitely cause uh you know, some anxiety when you're getting bitten by mosquitoes and um I think your folks are in the right frame of mind and are fortunate to have good public works, people who are sticking with, with this and, and uh, and handling the, handling the, the surge of work that we've all seen.
Appreciate you coming out and educating us. We do that. So.
Appreciate you, Dave.
Yes.
Thank you.
Have a good information.
So, so what we have, uh just to finish up the mosquito control conversation, uh where we left off on the twenty-fifth was talking about should we increase the vector to two fifty? We also were discussing five last, where we left off though was at two fifty. Uh you guys could take action on that. You could uh hold off whatever, whatever route you'd like to do, if you wanna. You know, if we have that, if we do have increase, it gives us the ability to, even if we don't do aerial spray, it gives us the ability to start building some funds in reserve or any sort, to be able to handle, like if we did a U T B and a sprayer, we'd have those resources over time to be able to get something like that. But that's up. I want to bring that to your attention if you want to discuss that or if you want to have more conversations on that.
Well, it's kind of the highlights of some of the stuff we talked about on the twenty-fifth. You know, a one to five is a pretty, pretty quick jump. You know, we're gonna be cautious that there's people in town here that are on fixed income comes in. You know, that's a pretty good jump. But we do have to, we, we can't go on a dollar. That's not gonna work for, as, as we expand territory and uh you know, having to do these multiple aerial sprays that we talked about, or not even multiple aerial sprays, sprays in general. You know, we're up again this year. It's not how much spraying we're doing as well. So, fifty cognitive of that um as well.
But there again, it's just went into effect.
Yeah.
So I'm, I, I know, I recognize it. We're at least building some costs. We're, we're building up some funds to offset the costs of what we're spraying today. We're still underwater.
Yeah.
For what it actually is costing us.
Yeah, what we generate is pretty much covering our basic contract with vector. It doesn't cover our additional. It doesn't cover any of our truck load sprays uh at one dollar. At two fifty, you would barely cover the spraying uh what we have with vector and for both the base, base contract and the above and beyond. And then one aerial. We would probably still have our costs for truck mounted spraying for the city on our own uh if we went to two fifty.
Well, we don't have to start it this month. I mean, we had talked about waiting till, say, October or whatever so we can communicate this change because we don't just want to rub it and then suddenly everybody's next bill goes to two fifty. So.
Right.
We have to prepare for a communication of something like this a few months out, so.
Uh I have just a question. When you do something like this and you, for example, raise that, do you ask patrons, um do you ever ask them what they'd be willing to pay or do you ever have a survey or anything like?
We haven't queried this one. We haven't que- we haven't queried this one yet. This has kind of came up because, because we're trying to try and run the numbers a little bit and see what, what do we need, especially when the aerial spraying bid came up because that was a lot of coin right away, eight K to do one shot. So we're trying to see what is the, without, we'll call it vector shock. What can we do to try and get through a year here and just be able to build some reserves without basically jack it up too much?
I know that any raise would be too much for some, but I do also know that there's plenty of people who are more than willing to.
I know, but understand that that's only one fee. So other fees we've discussed is that our trash is still put behind. Um you will live out where there's not, you don't pay for city water. So there's other fees potentially and things like that. And, you know, so we have to take in consideration all the fees that we are charging residents and making sure that we're being conscious of those sorts of things too. So don't want to, you know, suddenly crank everybody's up overnight. So that's our other concern as well.
If you, if council was concerned or wanted to have opportunity for additional public comment, my suggestion would be continue to have discussion at a future council meeting, maybe the next council meeting. We have that as agenda item and we try to put it on Facebook and our website and everywhere else where we just try to advocate for again folks, their comments. And we, maybe we give them opportunity where they can send it to via email uh to the city, also their thoughts. And all is just, you know, even if they could say, yes, we'd like to see an increase in this and increased activity of, you know, spraying for mosquitoes or no, we're content with what we have. You know, it, it gives you a gauge. Now, you might get a bunch of comments, you may get a few.
We could do like a survey monkey, obviously, to come up with something like that. And it would just gauge the feedback. I mean, that's kind of what we're looking at.
Yeah, gauge your feedback.
But we could, we could kind of table that conversation of a fee and bring them back at another meeting or two.
Yeah, I think a survey would be awesome.
And that would be that degree.
I'd rather, I'd rather table it and.
So let's do that then. Let's, we'll table the fee discussion. Let's try and get a survey put together. Just kind of get an idea what the folks are looking at. We can kind of preface it a little bit with paragraph about why we're going through this exercise.
Give them some facts so when they do come, put their vote in, they get what they're saying.
Yeah, this, this is good for me.
Just in there and say, would you be willing to pay this?
That's what I'm thinking. The survey monkey, we'd probably do that and then. Cause it would be able to at least gauge what folks would be.
I still think we're not given the complete picture though, because that's just one fee. I mean, all, everybody could say, I'll do five dollars. That's fine. It's all year long. But then if we turn around and say, oh, by the way, um within three months, we got to increase your trash by another dollar fifty a, a month. And then in another, something else came up, we have to, I, I mean, I just want to make sure we're not.
We've seen people come in plenty, you know, at least. So we kind of get what it, what it'll be like.
But I also think we as the council have more, you know, sometimes we do have more information than the public does and I want to make sure we're taking that all into consideration because that's a difficult, as you said, and everyone says there's, you know, this affects everyone. So I just want to make sure we're cognizant of all of that. I don't think there's anything wrong with the survey. I think that's a great idea.
Cause we want to get that. We want to survey what the public thinks on this too, even though, you know, we can follow through with everything.
Correct, yeah.
But that's, we know what the public sentiment is. So. All right. So let's do that then. We'll, we'll go ahead with surveys. So we'll move along then to number seventeen.
Hey, number seventeen is, um I believe.
Title six.
Title six. Yeah, I'm trying to find my papers on. It is on SharePoint there if you want to, if you want to see real exciting uh DOT assurances.
That's a DOT.
Yeah, we talked about this a little bit the last meeting, but what this is, title six. Uh basically saying we would not discriminate, prohibit discrimination on the basis of race, color or national origin uh when you're working with federally funded projects in this nature is for the recreational trails, trails program. Recreational trails program or R T P is the funding sources and be funding uh the shared use path along Carney Road seventeen from basically elementary school to breaks or eighty-first avenue south. Uh that project should be getting underway soon. What this does, if we are Title Six compliant, uh one, we'd have to sign the assurances. Two, we would put um uh some assurances on our website. And then uh what it does, it enables us to administer our own project with uh North Dakota Parks and Rec. They will, uh we are in the last round of projects that they weren't requiring the communities to be Title Six compliant. If you want to apply for an R T P grant or even get an R T P grant from now on, you have to be Title Six compliant. So it eliminates that hurdle in the future. Uh this is a funding avenue that we will continue to pursue. Uh sometimes I know you have, at the larger metro and planning organization level like MetroCog, they typically do this with their funds. So have, saying they're Title Six compliant. But going down to the city level, that's more of a recent activity from federal highway over the past couple of years. Um but like I said, the advantage of it is it allows us to administer our own project and it allows us to do our own projects uh uh bidding process for it. So we could bid it just like we would any other construction project for the city. This project that we currently have, that will be undertaken fairly soon, uh that one that they don't mean was in Bismarck. So it'll allow us to have it here. We would know who the contractors were. Uh get information quicker, who is awarded, and answer questions easier. So uh that's the pros and cons, or the advantages of doing this. There's not really much other.
We need a place.
Yeah. So what this is, is just, is standard language. Um I did not give this to legal for review because it is filed stated on the US DOT's assurances that you can't change it. The only thing you could plug in is the name of the program and the recipient and the agencies you're working with. So when you're working with the federal government on things, there's some matters that they are non-negotiables. This is a non-negotiable.
But this is only applicable to this program. We would have to reissue this.
This would be for this program.
But in the future, we would have an ordinance change to make sure that we are Title Six compliant.
Well, this would meet the requirement Title Six. We could do a general one in the future. Um.
So then we wouldn't have to do this.
Yeah, but in order for the R T P, it's just to target the R T P grant or the program. So.
So we need a motion approved?
Yep.
Someone.
Second.
All right, make some motion. Is it second? Okay, I'll favor say hi.
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 Okay.
All right, you got the next one, Brad.
The next one, and I appreciate the county's presence here, one with Ben coming here and also uh Paul Fercassi. He's here from the county for Director of Equalization. Did I get the title correct?
Yeah.
There we go.
You got it.
Um and then we also have Art Wilson here. Sorry, Robert, I'm calling you out, just so you know. And the reason, reason why I asked Paul to come is talk, answering questions you have about property taxes. The reason why uh it's important tonight, tonight is the night that we would be seeing, you're seeing the general fund budget. You're not seeing everything. You're seeing the general fund budget. That is because that is what is required for you to uh basically set the mills. Um this is saying the maximum amount or the levy authority, uh say it's trying to get away from saying mills all the time and they like to say levy authority. Um but right now our mills are equal at sixty point four two. We tried very hard last year to be right on and it's like hitting a moving target and ended up being roughly a point four, point four five increase in our mills. So not even half a mill, but there was a slight increase. We tried really hard, not to, but like I said, it's hitting a moving target. Uh based on feedback I've received of uh priorities from council from mu- months ago, we were asking what's important to you in the budget. You said you wanted to keep the mills the same or slightly decrease. So what we're doing in here is showing our best effort to keep the mills the same. And then if you do want to be a little more aggressive to either keep them same or decrease them slightly, we can do that. My intentions were to slight, or target a slight decrease. Uh but that's based on whenever, you know, I'd be talking to Paul to say, okay, how are these numbers looking? Do we need to adjust them a little lower to make sure that we're going to be under tar- under the target or not? Um he said we're hitting, trying to hit a moving target, but then we can decide how low we want to go. But what this does tonight, you said, by approving the general fund preliminary budget or draft budget, what you're doing is setting the property tax line. I said, very first one, so line five on the spreadsheet there. It's property tax revenue. We say eight hundred and seventy thousand. It says that we will not go any higher than that amount for our revenue and that would result in pretty much no increase in the mill, based on the most recent information we have. The other areas could change slightly, but we don't expect the budget overall to be increased. Uh this would be for the property tax, there would, we wouldn't be able to increase it. So if you have questions about the property tax, like I said, Paul could answer anything that you have. Also, if you have any questions about uh valuations, he's the guy to ask. Uh you'd know more of your answers about valuations. Of course, it's been going through property valuation increase or a, a review. And we're anticipating to have that impact in the ne- within the next couple of years. Um so if, Paul, if you could take a few minutes just to elaborate a little bit on our answering questions, appreciate it.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Thanks a lot. And um yeah, I guess first off, are there any just valuation questions that you have uh with how we got to where we're at today or just future or?
Well, I guess I want, cause you were here when was the tax equalization meeting?
March, March three. Uh, April, yep.
And in that time, you had given us some initial dollars and discussion was that because we are doing the reevaluation of properties and that, and that will be in the future, it was determined that the county would not require us to provide any type of valuation increase to houses, to residents in the city that had been happening over the last few years. Like the last few years have been four percent, four percent, whatever those percentages was. You had stated we were gonna keep everything except if something had adjusted or there were some, a few variances related to maybe house sales or something like that. But if I have a house that I've been here year after year, generally it's gonna have the same valuation from, from the county's perspective as last year. Is that correct?
Yeah, the twenty nineteen values in Horace, uh because as you said, with the reappraisal project going on, uh we just basically were calculating permits, new valuation, anything new bringing in value. Uh the sales ratio that was reflected out here supported the current values where they're at. So we just left everything as it was on the existing properties for this year.
As a resident, if I get my tax statement at the end of the year, my valuation should be very much close to the same one that I had last year.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep.
You better know.
Well, I just want to be sure because that's, well, we've gotten that, every year we've gotten that.
Standard percentage that was going up every year.
Well, usually we, there is a percentage that we'll try to calculate, but during the reappraisal cycle, we like to just kind of wait to see the results come in once we've collected all the data because we know, I mean, we're looking at every single property anyways. So why do a flat line adjustment where you're just building a, a new model?
Okay. But because it has been happening consistently for the last three to four years, I think that's a big.
So my question for you is, you know, being we're kind of, I'll say in our own little bubble right now while we wait our value, our valuation, where we're going. How about the rest of the metro? Has it been up? Valuations going up? I mean, it appears to be just based upon what we've been reading and hearing about, but I just wanted to see what your thoughts were on that.
Yeah, we have seen increases, not to the extent that we have, you know, five, six years ago, but we are still seeing uh you know, two to three percent increases on most properties. We're seeing though, um a lot of the higher end properties, two stories over the even one stories for that matter, over the four hundred thousand range. They'll sit on the market a little longer and they're maybe not getting uh, there might be too many on the market, let's say, so they might not be getting the, the value that they used to. Those, those sales are a little more flat even. Um but that starter home market still kind of ticking up pretty good because as everything else is just kind of increasing, that's, it's making that starter home more desirable. So you're seeing even that, that kind of go up a lot at a probably a higher rate, I would say.
Oh, that's the market that's moving.
Yeah.
You can see that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just a question.
Sure.
You know, I love your, um we've noticed increases in valuations, but we had that gal at all, building a survey. But we had that gal at home, she walked through my house.
Oh, okay.
And she didn't walk through everybody's house. So what is that kind of playing through and how is that process working?
Okay, and yeah, the process, so they usually are gonna try to hit, um, I believe their contractor did hit seventy percent of the homes where they're either. Uh, have a physical inspection where they reviewed it. So yeah, they won't get in every single house. Uh, but they do make three attempts to get in every house at, at certain times of the day. Uh, their data work is done for, uh, all the properties right now, except ones with existing permits. And those existing permits would be ones, homes that weren't completed at the end of twenty eighteen and new permits that were taken out in twenty nineteen. So they will be coming back to finish some further review this year. Uh, Matt sent me the permits throughout the year and I've been, uh. Attaching them basically to their parcel, the appropriate parcel, and I'll be sending that to Vanguard and they'll come out and finish the review of that. So once that's all done, we're hoping around December, they'll be sending, basically if you imagine, they'll just be sending a whole package of parcels back to me. We'll have all the sketch, um, data on, on all the houses. And then it's up for me in my office to make sure we're reviewing that, making sure what they're doing makes sense of what, you know, we see out here.
And how does that tie into our, our final? So let's, let's say you're some, somebody out there and there's a huge increase.
Mm-hmm.
Let's say forty percent for your, for your evaluation. You know, that, that's a big deal as well. So what, what would be the process for an individual to, to somewhat temper that? You talk to the community, that's a daily conversation with those people and that's a concern.
Yeah. And that's absolutely a great question. It's something in, um. You know, through, through going through some of these reappraisal cycles that, that, uh, I've seen happen before and it's, it, it's unfortunate. And it should never get to that instance where you're so far behind in values that. Uh, all of a sudden you go through your review and you're like, oh my gosh, this needs a forty percent increase. Unfortunately, there's no way to, to taper it off or just kind of like, you know, let's do ten percent this year, ten percent the next. It's, once you know the value's there. And it's reported, you have to bring it up to its market value or what's reflected and, and calibrated for that city. So you, you will see instances where, and hopefully there's, I'm hoping there's not a whole lot of them, but there will be. Where there's some, some heftier increases and there'll also be some instances where there's some pretty significant decreases too. It's, it's, there's ups and downs with everything. But, uh, we'll be reviewing those in office and we'll be sitting down. Um, I'll be here myself with the Vanguard team once the. So we'll send a letter to every single homeowner here, letting you know, you know, what your value came up to. And you'll have time to, um, meet with the representative from Vanguard and myself. We'll set up shop here so you can come visit with us and just say, hey, how did, like, how are you coming across this value? And hopefully it's an instance where we're inside your house and we kind of explain everything, but maybe it was something where it's estimated, we can go fix it at that time. We can go out and visit that property and make sure we get everything right at that time. So.
But the general timing on this though is not until sometime in twenty twenty, right? We're not gonna see these val- again, values are not gonna be changing on your. Tax statements we get at the end of the year. That might be something that comes in the future.
That's, that's right. Your tax statement this year will not reflect that reappraisal work. And that's, I'm glad you brought that up. Uh, what will happen this year, as I said, in around December, that's once tax statements are going out. That's when I'll receive all the information back. And I'll be, um, analyzing it, going through, you know, our team will look through every single parcel that they already looked through. And, um, you know, just making, making sure everything, kind of giving it just one, one more comb over before. Before notices of increase are sent out. And that will be probably about late February, early March that you'll, you, you'll receive your new valuation.
So I'm assuming some, you know, new building and new construction, some valuations have changed this year. For, from a budgeting standpoint, eight seventy, I think we based this number on what you presented to us like March, right? So are you feeling fairly confident that this is still a good number, that it hasn't changed significantly from this? Or just from a budget standpoint, is this too high, too low? Where, where, where's your head at now that you have six more months of information?
Based off the current mills that were, uh, and I apologize, was it sixty point?
Sixty point four two.
Point four two, okay. It would, it would go up. Slightly where we're at now and the only reason is because since, um, when I met with Brenton and today, uh, we just received the central assessments. That's the last piece of the puzzle, um, that goes into your valuation. So the state finalized those and just sent those off and then we just, I just input those in our system. So. There was some slight increases on there, but it's not enough where you're gonna see a, like a huge, huge jump off that dollar amount.
Even, even at, you know, a ten percent or a five percent, I mean, are you thinking that it might be less than five percent difference?
Yeah, to, to the overall amount of this, it'd be.
I mean, even if this moved by four, four or five thousand dollars, that's probably the max it would swing from.
I would be surprised if it moved it, you know, a half or even a quarter percent.
Oh, that small, a change, okay.
Because even with. As Brenton said, it's, we're, we're trying to hit a moving target.
Right.
It's, it's very difficult. And as that's increasing, we're getting, uh, you know, more people that as the year goes on. Are, uh, you, you know, they might've forgot last year to apply for their new home exemption or have us review it. And then, um. We're filing abatement on that. So you might get some value lost with that and it's, it's always an up and down throughout the year.
Okay, so, but from our standpoint, you're thinking that we should continue to stay with the number that we had. In March from a overall budgeting from a, what we expect, should expect from a property tax revenue.
Um, could you, could you say that one more time?
So the eight seventy number, that's the, that's about the number that you gave us earlier this year that, so.
Yeah.
The standpoint of your recommendations that we should essentially stay with that number that you gave us earlier this year as a target for our budget.
Yeah, that, that eight seventy is, is, is what you're, yeah, based off where the mills are right now and what we're seeing in the taxable value today. That's, that should be a pretty accurate portrayal of what those, that amount of mills will bring in.
So, so just to clarify for Brian, uh. What that includes, eight seventy, the actual number we got from the county was eight hundred seventy-five thousand, I think it's four nineteen. But, yep, eight seventy-five, four nineteen. But when you take out the transmission line tax and homestead credit where, which are factored in that eight seventy-five. That's where it got to eight seventy.
Okay.
So this is our best attempt to keep the mills the same based on information Paul's provided. Or his staff has provided in recent months here. Um. But since we're always trying to hit the moving target, that's why I was saying that we may bump that down a little bit more. Based on what he was saying, he just got that last piece of information. So we could see how we're sitting and go, okay, do we want to bump it down by a couple thousand or five thousand, ten thousand? Just to see. Like I said, try and hit that moving target. So.
And if it's all right, if there's not action that needs to be made tonight, I can have that to you right away tomorrow in the morning, look over and it'll be.
What they're saying is the cap tonight.
Gotcha.
So we can always go down.
I got you. I understand.
On the property tax. So that, that puts us in a better position on this. So. So yeah, once, if Paul sends that and then I touch base with Paul and I'll be able to revisit that and touch base with council. When we have our actual budget hearing. So, yeah.
And that was one of the goals because we recognized the reevaluation is going to hit some of the people potentially harder than maybe they anticipated. So that was one of the conversation points. It's like, all right, if they're gonna get hit by valuation increases. Maybe, you know, using that as a rationale and say, maybe we should at least keep it at the same or lower it a bit. So that, okay, we can soften some of the blow a little bit, right? Not, it's not gonna be much, but we can at least soften some of the blow.
Yep.
Because, you know, guess what? The largest part of the taxes is the school. And guess what? That's not going down because we got a new school going out. It is where it is.
And to give you an idea, in generality, it's a rough idea. Um, school district makes up about half. Uh, county is about twenty, twenty-five percent, city. Or county is around, around twenty percent, we're about twenty percent. And then, yeah, the fire district and parks that make up the rest. Um, that, that's the general, a very summarized, uh, some, or abbreviation of what, how, where the taxes are going. Um, did you have any other questions about property taxes? No, I'm throwing a lot of information at you. No? Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Um, just to highlight very briefly, I'll run through really quick some of the lines of why the changes we're at, we're at. Overall, the general fund budget, we have revenues saying one million five hundred seventy thousand, seven hundred dollars. That is an increase of. About a hundred and seventy thousand. The reason why there's an increase in the revenues expenses though, the biggest chunk of that, well, one. You got about sixty thousand. From property tax, that's your valuation increase. So there's part of the increase. It's not raising the mills. It's raising, it's just a calling for if your property value went up by two percent, that's part of it. The other is that we are more aggressive with budgeting state aid distribution. In the past, we took a more conservative approach with that. So we're, the projections showing for this year, two thousand nineteen. To fall, um, right around, um. Just over two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred five thousand dollars for state aid. And we want to be very conservative, build a cushion just in case. So we're going a hundred sixty for two thousand nineteen. For two thousand twenty, we're being a little more aggressive. Uh, have more confidence with the projections and we're watching the projections a lot more. I know Mayor and I have watched those quite a bit. Um, to see how the revenues are coming in. So we feel more comfortable saying two hundred twenty thousand. The projection shows two hundred thirty. Two or thirty-four thousand roughly, uh, we're saying two hundred twenty thousand. So that is increased there from last year also, another sixty thousand. The biggest change in revenue for the city though is building permits. And this, most folks will go, holy cow, why this much? There's a couple variables that come into play. One, we revisit our building permit costs for act, just the building permit, not the sewer, water. Those components, the actual building permit itself. We've revisited those costs, followed a similar structure that Fargo, West Fargo and Moorhead are using. One, we wanted to have some consistency with our peers amongst the whole FM region. That way if a builder comes in and sees what's going on, they're comparing apples to apples. Now the dollar amount is a little different. Ours is a little higher than West Fargo's. Uh, per square foot or with commercial, it's based on evaluation of the property, not square footage. Um, so we have that one factor in place. The other factor we have in place is, uh. Our growth in residential. We have, as you know, as you saw earlier today, increase in number of subdivisions. We have quite a few. That are going through the appropriate processes, the planning process and special assessment process. They're not ready, they haven't broken ground yet, or some have. Cub Creek had just broke ground last week, got their access road in. They might be ready this fall to put a few houses in. They might not. Uh, Terror Gardens, that one's going to be open for business pretty darn soon. Probably within the next week or two is my guess. Uh, or a few weeks. Then you have other developments that we've, like I say, are going through the planning process, make-up leaks. There's been a conversation quite a bit lately. And handful of other developments. Uh, also Bisto's Industrial Park, that plot was approved earlier this year. Uh, that one's going to begin online soon. Yes, we did get the layer of credit earlier, or late this afternoon. Uh, got that layer of credit issue resolved. What factored into this number for building permits is approximately a hundred twenty houses. Where that's where we're looking at residential. Uh, we're factoring in the cost of the building permit for the new high school. We have a good comparison, the middle school, the building permit was just over a hundred thirty thousand dollars. So that's a comparison to the high school. We know it's going to be a bigger building, have more facilities. Plus there's the other buildings on that school campus where they have for the fields and all that, that they need building permits for too. Um. That number does not reflect heavily on industrial or commercial growth, even though we anticipate it. Uh, you've seen a couple mixed, or some mixed use buildings proposed. Uh, that is probably likely to be brought back to council and planning commission near future. Um, there's still quite a bit of interest for that. There's other interests for office buildings. Um, uh, more like your strip mall or outlet type building. Uh, we've had interest regards to things like that, uh, even restaurants. So. We know there's a lot of interest. We anticipate we're gonna have some of that, but I didn't get real aggressive in projecting now the commercial or industrial side. So that number, although it looks high, the three-ten is likely probably low when you factor in our building permit costs and stuff. So I wanted to stress that, but that's how we get to that one million five seventy. Any questions on revenue?
But the, like, for example, the, the, just to point out, um, the, the, the cost of the permit for the school, for example. That even though that's a revenue item, it isn't like we get to spend that money, cause it's basically money in, money out for, because we're contracting for that inspection, correct?
We have to spend that money, cause it's money in, money out.
Right.
There is a portion of it, that's why we revisit those fees to make sure that.
They're correct.
Well, to make sure we're covering our costs too. So a portion goes to contractors for the building inspection for commercial. And industrial buildings, but we do get a portion, cause we have costs tied to that too.
The, the, the point is, is that's not a revenue generator for the city.
Not a big one.
It may appear on the surface that it is, it's a covering the cost of that inspections. So just want to make sure everyone understands that.
Yep. Um, also, the previous budget reflected, uh, say sales tax transfer for development. Uh, as we're cleaning up our accounting practices and our budgeting practices, uh, we have more comfort in. Just keeping that in the sales tax fund instead of transferring to general fund. So that changes that dollar amount a little bit of why you don't see that transfer occurring. Where we had, yeah, where we had seventy-five thousand dollars, that was just pulling from the sales tax to put in general fund to cover that kind of development. But since we have more confidence with the accounting of these dollars, we keep it in the sales tax fund instead. So.
That's good.
That's a big difference there. As for expenses, because I'll try to run through it really quick. Keep in mind, and one thing I want to stress is a lot of communities, they'll run through this, their budgets and take hours and hours. Now, I try to break it apart. That's why we've had a couple of different conversations about this. So you don't have to spend hours and hours getting into the budget unless you want to. So. Uh, some of the changes here, staff, uh, we have a finance director position, community development director. Uh, communication specialist. Those all influence, uh. The sal- the salary cost. That's why you have increases there. Also, we've had adjustments to be competitive with our peers, Fargo, West Fargo. Uh, we want to be able to get talent and keep talent. And if we're not competitive, we're not going to be able to keep that talent. Uh, for the elected or appointed officials, no, there's not a raise for elected officials reflected in here. Uh, appointed is the inclusion of the municipal judge. That's being put back into the budget. Insurance costs have gone up a little bit. Also, we're gonna be offering, uh. Life insurance, long-term, short-term disability, a few things like that, uh, benefits that did not have before. As for professional services, those will be consulted. They'll cover audit, legal, planning, zoning, uh, engineering, law enforcement. Those will be under one line item, professional services, but they're broken up just for you to be able to see what is all contributing to that.
So those will monitor exactly how we're doing in each of those line items instead of seeing a bunch under one.
Yeah, we're always able to break that out and tell you how much. But a lot of times you're looking at professional service, how are we saying professional service? It isn't always looking at one specific item, but we, we can always drill down if we need to. Um, under other contractuals, uh, this is covering partnership with. Or allowing us to have the ability to work with parks. Also, we've offered this to FIRE of having like contractor or shared. Positions or our part-time position that we have budgeted, uh, that provides us some additional funds to where. There could be additional hours or based on their needs, they may have a need for communication specialists to help them out or admin or. They may have a need for communication specialists to help them out or admin or whatever. So we're able to work with them and have staff dedicated to that. That's in talking with Justin earlier today. And then also, we've extended all branch out to fire to offer that help too. But haven't heard back on that one. Also, we have under other contractuals is in case we decide to have additional space. We have that in our pocket. We have funds available. Because we are running out of room at City Hall, having space for staff and having space for meetings. We actually fill this room with public attendance fairly well compared to a lot of other communities I've seen. Even big cities don't fill their room and we do at times, which is good because we're getting the community engaged. But we need to make sure we have enough room for them too. Another difference you'll see is under electricity. So the line thirty-two or say three fifty-one, that's electricity or utilities. Used to hit the utilities entirely in general fund, not the other areas like sewer or water or streets. This is effort to start spreading those costs out to appropriate funds. So sewer, having the sewer fund actually pay for. The lift stations. When the pumps are running, to pay for the electricity to run the pumps. Makes sense. The set, we're trying to get away from having the general fund cover all these different costs and have the actual fund be more self-sufficient. That way, when those other funds need help with a bigger project or something, the general fund is there to be able to help. And that's what our goal is, we're trying to accomplish. Economic development, as I mentioned, revenues is pulled out because that would be treated under the sales tax fund. And then. If you go down towards the very bottom. Another difference that we have is state aid distribution. We're taking ten percent of the state aid and sharing that ten percent to the park district and ten percent to the fire district. That's to spread some of that state aid distribution and that is also why earlier I mentioned that we were being more. Or we're being budgeting closer to the projections is to help cover that difference there.
Were we able to transfer the uh like the ten thousand dollars for the transfer to equipment reserve and special streets? Were we able to transfer those?
You typically do that towards the end of the year. So in case you don't have that financial ability, you don't transfer everything. But you typically do that towards the end of the year. I like to do a budget amendment towards the end of the year also. So that way, if we're in a situation where we got more funds, say our revenues came in higher, then we could put more into a reserve account. Equipment reserve, we introduced that in the two thousand nineteen budget, but one thing that we're trying to target with the general fund budget and also the utilities. Is to create a a reserve fund for the individual funds. So it'd be a general fund reserve, water reserve, sewer reserve. A garbage or trash reserve. So you have these different reserves that over time, you'd be able to have something in there. It's not going to happen overnight. Uh I honestly think that we'd be getting there years full if we were to. Be putting a ton of money into a reserve account overnight. Because then you're you're not really spending that money, which is great as a safety net, but. I I look at is if you have those revenues come in, say you have something, our projections are off and we pulled in a lot more revenue. That's opportunity to. To fund those reserves a little healthier um if we have that situation arise. But the general fund reserve and those reserve funds are new this year. That will give us two ways of having a reserve. One is through our fund balance. The fund balance is basically like your checking account balance. So you have your budget. Let's say your budget is to spend a hundred dollars, but in your checking account, you have two hundred dollars. So your fund balance is that leftover money that you have, so you go higher a little, but you're not being in the negative. Uh the general fund or the reserve fund is you're actually playing it away, playing it like an empty bank. You're not touching it. Unless you absolutely have to. So try to stay away from the reserve fund when you can. Uh also, for the utilities, we'll get into that conversation at a later date. But for the utilities, some of our loans, like our SRF loan, we need to have a certain percentage. Of that SRF loan set aside. We have to have a reserve fund dedicated to that or earmark that money as a reserve. So by starting to develop these reserve funds, it'll make it easier to earmark that money for those different grants. And then as we apply for future grants, whenever those situations arise, the goal is to have the reserve funding. Set aside fairly early on. Uh that way, we're not trying to scramble last minute and get something placed. And have to increase the rate just to build a reserve. But that puts us at one million five seventy-seven hundred. So. Any questions on expense? So I tried to run through it really quick. I just came just came to my mind too on the revenues, another area that is increased significant amount. Is the franchise agreement line item, the franchise agreement line item, I believe was, yep. This year was budget fourteen thousand, we were saying thirty-five for next year. The reason why is we currently only have two. Active revenue generating franchise agreements. That is our nickel and cable one or spark light. What the name is. Lucas and I are going through updating our franchise agreements with the different utilities. A lot of times they have revenue share, so they'll say like two or anywhere from up to five percent. Typically, you'll see two to five percent. Where it's basically those utilities like paying rent to be in your right way. And. This is something the city hasn't capitalized on in the past, but we're working towards. Uh getting those agreements in place, finding out what do we, what utilities we have present. What ones we could get these franchise agreements with and then meeting with those utilities to get those agreements in place. So we're hoping to have a handful of those agreements in place by the end of the year. That's our goal. Also, within those utility agreements, it outlines parameters for relocation of the utilities. So if we have another construction project again, uh you probably remember those couple of change orders that we brought forth to council. Earlier this summer for the roundabout. Yeah, this, well, this actually, depending on how the franchise agreement is written, it may require the utility to move their. Line out of or to a different area at their cost. And all the county has agreements like that, different type parameters. Uh many other cities do that too. But I'll take the example like the city of Wapton, how theirs reads. If it has to move for a city project, it moves and it's on the contractor for their cost to re- or to relocate it. As long as it's being requested to be relocated in a right-of-way, that city occurs, even if the city was purchased additional right-of-way. So. Those are things that we're looking at and honestly, it should help diversify the revenues for the city. But at this time, if you don't have any other questions, we're looking for approval of the preliminary draft general fund budget. And then we'd be looking for setting the public hearing date or the hearing date for the two thousand twenty general fund budget. My recommendation on that hearing date would be September sixteenth. The reason why is because that hearing date has to fall within. From September seventh to October seventh. It can't be before Sep- September seventh, no later in October or October seventh. That September sixteenth is our second meeting, council meeting in September. If you want to go to the first meeting in October, we might be able to make that work. I can double check real quick.
I'd say we do it on the sixteenth.
Something comes up and we have to go to another meeting, we definitely have to.
October seventh is the first meeting in October, so yeah, sixteen. So in a motion, I'd have to just have approval of the preliminary. Twenty twenty budget or general fund budget and then also setting the hearing date.
So by us doing the motion to approve the general fund budget that is that has been presented to us, that is locking our.
Upper cap.
Our cap on our property. What did you call it? The the taxing?
You're you're levying authority.
Our target is the same as last year.
Our target is by going with what is presented is keeping the same mill rate. Which would bring your valuation up a little bit, but you would keep the same mills and the focus has been on the mills. So yes, it's the intentions are to try to stay as close as possible to that mill rate. Now, you're going to try to be in the moving target, but that's the number, be as close as possible.
I motion that we accept the preliminary um two thousand twenty general fund budget and set our. Public hearing, general stating date. Budget hearing date is September sixteenth.
Second. Rule call this one, Dave.
Yes, Chelsea. We'll get that set up then.
All right, who wants next one? Jim, Brent?
I have this next one over here. So the next one here is, and this one, what I would recommend is we come back as a. Oh, I informed me of the projects we're looking at. Jim could elaborate details on the projects. We are not going to be able to tackle a ton of system improvement projects or street improvement projects this year. Unless we're to dip in to say like the highway fund, fund balance or our sales tax. Just we have so many different projects going on and based on some of the other items that we've had to tackle this year, like dust control. Gravel on roads, uh and then the patching job on Wall Avenue. They hit up quite a bit of what we had budgeted for system improvement. We didn't budget a ton for that, but we had some. However, if you want to tackle a few projects or untown. Uh that was our public work staff and Jim tend to find some of the more common problem areas that have been brought to our attention. Now, there are more, trust me, there. If you if you gave me a million dollars, I could find.